Good evening, as Chair of the Hidden Brookline Committee of the Human Relations Commission. I stand here to make the first acknowledgment in-town meeting since before the American Revolution of slavery in Brookline. Let me introduce the topic with a short clip. Please.
Brookline, our town, a town with a rich history and a rich present. We pride ourselves on our excellent schools, our wealth of parks and open spaces, our superb public safety system, our active citizenry. From its beginning, Brookline has been home to prosperous people and, as a consequence, the town has prospered. We respect our past and we honor with public monuments the people who gave of themselves to make our community, our commonwealth, our nation, strong and prosperous and free. But there is another part of our history, little known, yet hidden in plain sight. Look again at the plaque in Town Hall which honors the Minutemen of Brookline. There below, names familiar to most of us, Aspen Wall and Boylston and Corey, appear these names: Esquire Gardiner's Adam, Esquire Boylston's Prince, and Esquire White's Peter. Adam and Peter and Prince may have been Minutemen, but they were also slaves. So too were Felix, property of Captain Henry Sewell, whom Sewell hired out to the town of Brookline to clean Town Hall; and Peter, another of Sewell's properties, who ran away from his owner, as did Prince, who fled the ownership of Joshua Boylston. Slave owning, both as a sign and a source of wealth, was a reality in colonial Brookline. As this map from 1746 indicates, over one-third of all the land in Brookline was held by slave owners. As early as 1675, residents of what is now Brookline were slave traders. George Cabot, first U.S. Senator from Massachusetts, maintained a home in Brookline and also traded in slaves. Edward Devotion is honored for his bequest to the town of Brookline for the building of a school. Less well-known is that among the various properties listed in his will was a Negro. We know that this is part of our Brookline legacy. We know. We know that this is part of our Brookline legacy. We know. We know that this is part of our Brookline legacy. We know. Whereas, over seventy children, women and men were enslaved here, whereas the ownership and trade in enslaved persons increased the prosperity of many Brookline families thus increasing the collective wealth of the town, whereas we believe that acknowledgment of past wrongs can promote reconciliation, it is time. It is time that the Town Meeting of Brookline hereby acknowledges with profound regret the enslavement of Native Americans and African Americans and the exploitation of slave labor by this town, within this town, and amongst the citizens of this town. It is time that Town Meeting call upon the people of Brookline to acknowledge and recognize contributions from Native Americans and African Americans to the town. It is time that we pledge continued vigilance against all practices and institutions that dehumanize and discriminate against people. It is time.
There is, to everything there is a season. Tonight, we can do what people who came before us in this town could not do: acknowledge with profound regret the history of slavery in this town. For the first time in our history, we can face the painful past, a painful part of that past. For the first hundred-and-twenty-five-plus year, settlers in Brookline thought slavery was both normal and good. For the next hundred years after slavery had ended here, the topic rarely appeared in historical accounts. When it did, it was usually an incidental story embedded in the history of wealthy families. In the twentieth century, somehow, slavery in Brookline became all but forgotten. I don't know about you, but most people I know grew up thinking that slavery was a peculiar institution of the South. When slavery was only in the South, a number of Brookline citizens participated in the Underground Railroad. Our resolution today in no way detracts from this later history, which is easier to embrace and more widely known. Next year, we plan to return here with a new article celebrating the contributions of these nineteenth-century Brookliners. The Hidden Brookline Committee and the Commission are actually very proud of this warrant article. Why? Because we believe that our town is courageous enough and ready enough to recognize that there were grievous wrongs done in our past. We believe that such recognition can move us toward reconciliation and toward the prevention of violations of our common humanity. Thank you. We look forward to hearing what you have to say.
Thank you, Town Meeting members, for providing an opportunity for me to address you. And thank you for being honorable representatives.
Tell us, tell us who you are, sir.
I'm sorry. I'm Malcolm Cawthorn.
Thank you. A Brookline resident.
A Brookline resident, yes, sir. And thank you for being honorable representatives for the town I love so dearly. My family moved here in 1973. I attended Devotion School and Brookline High School, so have my siblings and my children. While I went away to college and got married and lived outside of Brookline, I spent some part of every year for the last thirty-nine years in Brookline. It's an important part of my identity. Tonight, you have an opportunity to make Brookline a more inclusive place and recognize a much more inclusive history. I've been teaching history since 1992 and teaching history at this high school since 1998. My experience through Brookline Public Schools gave me very little study or understanding of slavery, slavery in America or anywhere else, let alone Brookline. I went to college in the South, where I was shocked to discover that slavery existed in northern colonies and states. As well-educated as I was when I left Brookline High School with my diploma, the education that helped me get into every school I applied to, I was ignorant to the slavery in my own backyard. You see, the Brookline I know has always been liberal-minded, accepting and open. These are the main reasons, along with the schools, that my wife and I decided to move our family to the town that reared me. However, that dissuades us. It dissuades us from lurking for the true history of Brookline. We simply assume that this is the way we have always been: progressive, fair, egalitarian. This is why my students readily believe the stories of the Bowditch, Lawrence, Philbrick, Pierce and Tappin families. They believe the town was never different than the one they live in right now. To imagine townspeople who would protest and fight in wars to end slavery is a very easy sell as a teacher because of Brookline's modern existence. This is actually an exciting part of my teaching as an American history teacher: to place local history within the realm of national discourse. However, most of my students fight the acknowledgment that Brookline had slaves. The idea that Brookline knowingly denied people rights of citizenship and freedom is so very foreign to them. The Brookline they know has school-wide Chinese New Year celebrations, performs winter concerts with adults representing multiple languages and religious denominations, and presents counter-arguments of Native Americans before Thanksgiving. Yet slavery is still almost inconceivable to them. Their reaction is almost always one of anger. "Why are we just learning this now?" is the question I am most often asked. The kids feel deceived, lied to and corrupted by the adults who have been afraid to tell them the truth. I think Brookline has an incredible opportunity this evening. For an African American who has grown up here and chosen to raise his family here, this is an opportunity to acknowledge the existence of a people who identified, as I do, but had no voice. This is an opportunity to look at me and say we are better than our ancestors and our predecessors. More importantly, for the people that represent the multiple races, religions, ethnicities and languages spoken in this wonderful town, this is an opportunity to say we embrace all of our history, that our town's history is a real reflection of America and moved within the narrative of our country's history, that we have come so very far from our humble beginnings and that we recognize the power of acknowledgment makes every citizen proud to be included in such a fantastic town. I hope you consider the impact you possess in your vote, because not too long ago, some of you, nor I, could have imagined casting a vote. The American dream belongs to all of us, and so does this history. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Wang.
Good evening. Ed Wang, Brookline resident, Chair of the Human Relations and Youth Resources Commission. As an immigrant, an Asian-American, an American, I am proud of Brookline acknowledging and regretting slavery and past injustices of our town towards Native Americans and African Americans. Furthermore, I am proud of the continuing effort and courage to ensure equality and justice for all. Tonight is a historical moment. Someday, our children, grandchildren, great-grandchildren would say, "My father, mother, or grandfather, grandmother, they were there and they voted." It's a proud moment for our future. Thank you.
Harry Friedman, Precinct 12. I stand here tonight in opposition to Article 27. I am not opposed to the article because of what is in it, I am opposed to the article because of what has been left out. The article seeks an expression of regret by the town for the existence of slavery here in the sixteenth and seventeenth centuries. A number of whereas clauses outlines the history upon which the resolution is premised. When I was in grade school, my family moved to what I considered the Deep South, Northern Virginia. But when you're coming from Vermont, you've never been farther south than Worcester, Northern Virginia is the Deep South. And it was the year we had to study state history, so I sort of caught up, because we came partway through the year, on Virginia history. And one of the things I remember is that 1619 was what they called a red-letter date in Virginia history, because three things happened. One, the House of Burgess', which was the colonial legislature, was established. Two, women were brought into the colony. And three, Negro slaves from Africa were brought into the colony. The textbook sort of made it sound like these were all good. There was no distinction among the three of them, like that one of these might be not a good thing. And I knew otherwise, but was sort of mystified by the book was so neutral. The book had its facts correct. Slaves were brought to Virginia in 1619. But without context or perspective on slavery, with no value judgment, it ended up being bad history. I believe the resolution citing the historical record needs to do two things. One, it has to have its historical facts correct. And two, it has to place them in historical context. And I believe this resolution falls somewhat shot on both points. The first clause notes the existence of slavery in Brookline by 1675 and cites, quote, "town meeting records." Well, they're obviously not Brookline town meeting records, because Brookline wasn't a town until 1705 and didn't have town meeting. It wasn't a town, it didn't have town meeting. I'm assuming the reference is to Boston town records, because Boston was a town until 1822. It's true that many people who owned land in Brookline at the town, at the time, lived outside of the present town boundaries. They had woodlots, they had farms here. Thus, it's unclear from the resolution to whom we're even referring: residents of what later became Brookline or residents of other towns. This should have been clarified. The resolution states that in 1717, Town Meeting selected a slave owner as the town's first minister and paid a salary out of town funds. This was true, because until the 1830s, Massachusetts had an established church, and every town had to have a congregational church, and the congregational minister was paid out-of-town funds. What is not mentioned, to put it into context, is that seventy-two years later, we chose the first of eight presidents who owned slaves while they simultaneously held office. These weren't all sort of slacker presidents, like John Tyler, who was one of them, who nobody knows who he is, but included George Washington, Thomas Jefferson, James Madison, James Monroe, and Andrew Jackson, people found to this day on our coinage, and one for whom our nation's capital and another state are named. In 1746, Henry Sewell had his slave Felix clean Town Hall. That's mentioned here. There's no mention of Judge Samuel Sewell, whose farm was here in the town of Brookline, and who in 1700 what one of the very first abolitionist tracks on slavery: the selling of Joseph. If you want more information on him, you can ask one of his descendants, Virginia LaPlante, whose daughter has written a book about him. There's also no mention of the Lawrence family, which funded the Free Town of Lawrence, Kansas, when anti-slavery people were moving into that territory, and who funded other abolitionist causes in the eighteen hundreds. The very first whereas clause says that slavery continued, quote, "until roughly 1800." Well, it wasn't until roughly 1800, because in 1783, the Massachusetts Supreme Judicial Court said that slavery was unconstitutional under the Massachusetts Constitution of 1780, and Massachusetts became the first state in the Union to abolish slavery. This should have been mentioned. It's part of the context. Brookline did prosper due to the wealth of slaveholders, but we were hardly alone. So did much of New England, much of the United States, much of the Western Hemisphere, much of Europe, and many of the people in Africa who sold the slaves to us. Finally, what about the hundred-and-eighty town residents who fought in the Civil War, a war against slavery, seventy-two of whom lost their lives? There's no reference to them in this resolution. My precinct had a warrant review the other night, and one of the people I'll be running with next year, sort of be running against, publicly thanked me for taking this stand for making his reelection much easier. So I offered to also oppose the tobacco resolution tonight and the air pollution resolution tonight, and sort of make it a clean sweep. I am not expecting to be re-elected next year on the backs of this pro-slavery crowd in Precinct 12. I am apparently several hundred, several hundred years too late for that, and as the resolution points out, they were only a quarter of the town. I think that if you're going to teach this history to people in the schools, and I think it should be taught, it's important that you not replace one historically incomplete story with another historically incomplete story just on the other side. A warrant article dependent upon the history for its basis has to get the history right. It has to tell the whole story. This does not. I ask you to vote no action.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen.
My name's Leah, hi, my name's Leah Cohen, and I'm representing, presenting the position of the Advisory Committee. A summary of Article 27, a resolution recognizing a history of slavery in Brookline. As many of you here tonight are aware, the Hidden Brookline Committee was founded as part of the Human Relations and Youth Resources Commission six years ago. The mission of the Hidden Brookline Committee was to bring to light the history of slavery and freedom in Brookline by enhancing public education. With extensive research, the committee has told the story of slavery in Brookline, bringing to light many facets that were previously unknown or not formally acknowledged. The work of the Hidden Brookline Committee has resulted in a number of acknowledgements regarding the connections between the town of Brookline and slavery, including a plaque placed in Town Hall acknowledging the ties between Brookline and slavery, and numerous successful events and efforts by the Department of Human Relations, Youth Resources, to provide history and context. Before you tonight is a resolution describing the existence and extent of slavery in Brookline and encouraging the Brookline schools to include information about this subject in its curriculum. I would like to summarize for you the process and discussion that led to the resolution as we bring it before you. An ad hoc subcommittee of the Advisory Committee had held two public hearings on this article. Attendees at the hearings overwhelmingly supported the article, although some expressed concern that the resolution, as originally submitted, might have a polarizing effect by seeming to apologize for the acts of others centuries ago. Others present at the hearing expressed the belief that the resolution presented a statement of collective grief and acknowledgment of the national shame associated with slavery and American history, not an apology. Most expressed the view, as did the petitioner, that this was not meant to be an apology, but rather an acknowledgment of a regrettable period in Brookline. Slave owning may have been commonplace at one time here as well as elsewhere, putting Brookline's history within the larger context of the U.S. We did not escape the shameful history of our country. Although Brookline's progressive history with regard to the anti-slavery movement has been well documented and publicized over the years, Brookline's earlier history of the slave ownership has not received the same degree of attention. Knowledge of this period contradicts our perception of New England as always having been at the center of the anti-slavery movement. This article is not meant as an apology, an admonition, or setup for reparation, but as a recognition of the existence of slavery in our community. This resolution recognizes that slavery existed in Brookline and regrets that it did. We cannot change what happened in the past, but we can simply acknowledge that there was an unfortunate period in our history and use that acknowledgment as a reminder of the need to be ever vigilant as a community and as a society. In addition, since Town Meeting cannot directly address the specifics of public school curriculum, the motion merely encourages inclusion of this history in appropriate places within that curriculum. Following substantial discussion and amendments, the Advisory Committee, voting sixteen to three to one, recommends favorable action on the resolution with two distinct changes, as shown in your purple supplement. One, to strike the phrase, "We recognize that even the most abject apology for past wrongs cannot right them." And from, from the final whereas, as so as to keep the focus on this resolution what it is, an acknowledgment, and then to add to the fourth resolve clause is encouraged to promote the inclusion of this history in that sentence. The Advisory Committee met about an hour ago and had a lively debate on the motion that was early, mentioned earlier, and voted not to change our original recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Roger Blood from Precinct 13, Town Meeting member. I apologize, first of all, for filing this late. I didn't know that the article was going to be discussed tonight, and I wasn't going to be here next week, so couldn't file it if I wasn't going to be here, the amendment. Also, I've had the benefit of some exchanges of emails over the listserv today, looking at the original explanation of the article. And so I'd like to begin quickly, at least by remarking on what this amendment is not about and is not intended to be about. First of all, it's not at all relating to the content or the merits or the substance of this article itself and the message about slavery and the history of slavery that it contains. Second of all, it is definitely not about the right of Town Meeting to engage on topics such as this, and this topic in particular. There's absolutely no question of Town Meeting's right to do that. And surely, if there was something that was done in the curriculum or by the school committee that Town Meeting found objectionable in the future, Town Meeting probably should voice its concern if it sought to. But, but supporting this particular amendment tonight in no way suggests that we shouldn't or couldn't do that in the future. And third of all, this, this suggested amendment is not about the difference between suggest or tell. The school committee, of course, has already expressed its satisfaction with the wording of the article now, where Town Meeting is simply suggesting what should be done in the curriculum, and there's no question, and my amendment doesn't deal with the question of us purporting to tell the school committee or anybody else what to do. So why, why am I asking you to consider this amendment? It's really on two broader issues. The first is the question of whether Town Meeting wants of its own accord to exercise some self-restraint in terms of deciding what is a good venue for debating and determining and resolving, quote unquote, what should be in the school's curriculum. And the second one, perhaps more importantly, is, do we want to set a precedent, if not intentionally, but with this particular part of the, of the slavery resolution, do we want to set a precedent for the future in which resolutions of this sort inevitably involve effectively calling the school committee into our venue to debate and discuss and try to resolve or negotiate what should be in the school curriculum? Arguably, there is ample venue and a good record with the schools that doesn't have to bring them over into our venue to do this. So you, I would ask that you consider whether this provision might be encouraging that sort of change of venue, if you will, in the future, on future articles. Now, Town Meeting has a long history of debating and taking positions on, on global and national political and social issues, and many of these topics, I think all of us agree, including the subject of this article, are very interesting and very engaging, and the debate is useful and stimulating, so people enjoy it and it's meaningful. That said, hopefully, we might also agree that, that Town Meeting in debating and resolving this and other articles in the future should not be communicating a message that our Town Meeting should be a central venue for debating and resolving what should or should not be taught in our public school system. Why not voluntarily leave this to the school's established venue? After all, there really isn't any evidence that that process and that venue on many previous issues hasn't worked perfectly well. So on, on that basis, rather than the two or three things that I, I hope you'll, you'll agree this, this particular amendment is not about, I would ask that you consider the removal of this particular resolution from the larger article. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mermel. And Mr. Conquest, would you come forward, please? Sit in the front row.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Jesse Mermel, for a unanimous Board of Selectmen. Article 27 is tough to talk about: Brookline as the home of slaves and slave owners, Brookline using slave labor to clean Town Hall, Brookline slaves serving as Minutemen at the Battle of Lexington, more than twenty-five percent of Brookline residents owning slaves. As far in the rearview mirror as these facts are, as Malcolm mentioned, this isn't the Brookline we know. Brookline we know and love, all the more reason to talk about it. We need to talk about it for the same reason that we talk about all human atrocities, no matter how far in the past, to make sure that future generations know what happened so that history never repeats itself. To me, the most important part of this resolution is the clause calling for the history of slavery in Brookline to be taught in our schools. Of course, this is a decision ultimately left to the schools, and we can merely make a suggestion. Tough lessons about our past, yes, but important. Brookline has much to be proud of, including on the issue of race, but we are imperfect and not without our failures. The prevalence of slavery in Brookline even centuries ago is a failure that we must recognize and take ownership of. The most obvious statement of the night is that this resolution cannot right the many wrongs committed here in Brookline years ago, but it can allow this town, capital T, to take responsibility for what the men and women who came before us accepted and in some cases furthered, to express our extreme regret, and to pledge our continued vigilance against discrimination of all forms within the borders of our community and beyond. The Board of Selectmen thanks the Human Relations Youth Resources, hardest committee name in town, Human Relations Youth Resources Commission, and Hidden Brookline for bringing this uncomfortable subject into the public conversation, and urges favorable action on the advisory committee's version. We have not considered any subsequent amendments.
Arthur Conquest, Precinct 6. Mr. Moderator, can I just say one thing before my time starts? Is that possible?
Your time is running, Mr. Conquest.
Sorry. I won't say it. I just thought I'd inject a little bit of humor, but that's okay.
Well, inject humor in your five minutes.
No, that's okay. Okay. I have three points I want to raise about warrant article 27. First, what is the purpose and outcome of the article? At best, to make Town Meeting members feel good, to admit the notion that liberal Brookline is sensitive to the pain of Black and Native people who suffered as a result of America's first sin. I, as a Black man who suffers almost daily from the remnants of the institution of slavery, should fall in line and atone, apologize, or endorse this warrant article. W.E.B. Du Bois, the great Black scholar and activist from Great Barrington, wrote in 1903, and I quote, "White men of America, the problem is plain before you. Here is a race transplanted through the criminal foolishness of your fathers," unquote. And I underlined the word "yours." At its worst, Article 27 is subterfuge, smoke and mirrors. Three years ago, America elected its first Black president. Massachusetts, six years ago, elected its first Black governor. Three years ago, Newton elected its first Black mayor. Cambridge has had two Black mayors going on a decade now. And Boston elected Hispanic and Black city councilors, giving that city four Black and Hispanic members on its council. And the town of Brookline? Where do Blacks, Asians, and Hispanics fit anywhere in the power structure of elected and/or appointed offices? I say our omission from the power structure is deliberately purposeful. It's white supremacy in its most naked form. Second, Mother Jones, the turn-of-the-century labor organizer and community activist, said, and I quote, "Pray for the dead and fight like hell for the living." Article 27 and Brookline does just the opposite. As in, work hard for the dead and pray, P-R-E-Y, on the living. The Sagamaw, the student newspaper at Brookline High School, wrote in its March 2012 edition, quote, "Achievement gaps divide students." The first week I moved to Brookline in 1982, a flyer was stuck in my front door inviting me to attend a meeting at Brookline High concerning the achievement gap. Thirty years and a million dollars a year from the state for Medco, and the problem hasn't been solved, as Brookline preys on the living. The front page headline in today's Brookline tab speaks for itself, quote, "Dean Adrian Memes Charges Racial Discrimination in Hiring Snub," unquote. The charge means nothing unless you put into context Al Fortune. For many here, how many here remember the Al Fortune debacle of 20 years ago? A Black man who was for 18 years the vice-principal of devotion and principal of the Pierce School, two years as the assistant superintendent for Human Resources for the Brookline Public Schools, and he was, quote unquote, "snubbed" as he applied for the headmaster's position at Brookline High School. Number three, Article 27 says, quote, "Resolved that we pledge continued vigilance against all practices and institutions that dehumanize and discriminate against people," unquote. Who's the "we," and does that include the town of Brookline? How many in this auditorium, other than Mariela Ames, Town Meeting member from Precinct 15, and Bobby Nagel from Precinct 11, and I, have read the First and Second Annual Report on Workforce Inclusion and Diversity? Which exists as a result of Town Meeting's resolution in 2010 as part of a Dr. MLK celebration initiative? The report, whose preparation is shrouded in secrecy and mumbo jumbo, amounts to criminal foolishness.
You have one minute.
In last year's report, our group of Black and Hispanic Town Meeting members stated that there wasn't one Black or Hispanic or Asian department head in Brookline. This year, the headline in the Brookline tab reads, "Report: Town Leadership Lacks Diversity." Public comment on the report is almost nonexistent, like the chair of the group who prepared the report presented it to the Board of Selectmen in 15 minutes, while many, while any public comment is swept from the podium as quickly as possible.
Thirty seconds.
You can, you're an irritant. It's like, take what you're given and say no more. I say in conclusion, Brookline, supposedly the most highly educated community in the Commonwealth, is just about two and a half centuries backwards. Why not file a resolution for reparations? Thank you.
Bobby Nabel, Precinct 11. Despite the election of a Black president, some of the divisions resulting from racial difference remain undiminished. For the most part, we still try to avoid talking to one another about issues of race. And when avoidance fails, it often seems as if Blacks and Whites inhabit different universes. And perhaps, in fact, we do. My great-grandmother was born on a plantation shortly after the Civil War. I'm old enough to have grown up during segregation, not just in the South, where I could buy an ice cream cone in the drugstore but not sit at the counter to eat it, where I traveled in segregated trains between Cincinnati, Ohio, and Knoxville, Tennessee, was limited to colored water fountains in restrooms, shopped for shoes or hats without being able to try them on, but also in Detroit, where a hotel refused to honor my family's reservation and referred us to a Black hotel in town, and in Cleveland, where newspaper real estate ads often read, "Whites only." When I married, more than a third of the states would have refused to perform or recognize the Union because my husband was white. And when we considered where we would live, we eliminated perhaps half the remaining states, because they would have ranged from unfriendly to dangerous for an interracial couple. And finally, when we bought our home in Brookline, I didn't see it until the papers were signed, because Boston-area realtors had shown us so few homes when we applied together. Most of these things no longer happen, so why was listing them important? It's important because that list is part of the life I've lived and part of who I am. Surely, I know how much things have changed, but to act as if because it has changed, the experience of those decades no longer matter, is like saying that what I lived and how did not happen or does not matter. I once took a tour of a South Carolina plantation, and as we admired the beautiful, intricately carved woodwork, all I could think of was how much effort it would have taken some slave to keep it dusted and polished, and that had I lived during slavery, it might have been my job. What is this to do with the warrant article? It is, in fact, an argument for its importance. Acknowledgement of the differences of how people experience this country is essential if we are to be able to talk productively about where change is needed and how to bring it about. The historical Brookline that makes us proud because of its opposition to slavery is not the only Brookline that existed. Recognizing that four or more generations here endured slavery is a way of correcting history, of recognizing that accuracy in recording history is a way of respecting the experience of all who lived through it, and who, through many more generations, suffered the consequences of that experience. That the practice of slavery thrived for a significant time in Brookline is as important to know and acknowledge as is the opposition to slavery expressed by individuals more than 100 years later. It was not a short-lived aberration, nor the practice of a negligible few. Whatever we are today, whether as a community or as individuals, is in some measure not entirely separable from what we have been in the past. To the extent that we acknowledge and accept the past and our different experiences of it makes it possible to have necessary conversations about race in the present. Looking back makes it possible to move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, John Bassett, Precinct 6. I should start by thanking the Human Relations Youth Resources Commission and the Hidden Brookline Committee for this resolution and for bringing this information forward. I also want to thank Arthur Conquest and Bobby Nabel for reminding us of the context in which we are now. I urge you to vote no action on Mr. Blood's amendment, and to vote favorable action on the resolution unamended. First, to, well, to Mr. Blood's amendment, I grew up thinking that slavery was a terrible thing that happened long ago and far away. The work of the Hidden Brookline Committee has made me realize that it may have been long ago, but it was right here. It is an education for me, and I also wondered tonight, well, if it wasn't far away, is it long ago? So I went online briefly, and I got a little bit about slavery today in this world. It is hardly legal anywhere, but what, I think it was Wikipedia says, "International organizations such as Amnesty International, Anti-Slavery International, and the U.N. estimate that between 20 and 27 million people are in a situation of forced labor today." For comparison, this is more people in bond labor at one time than ever before, and finally, that forced labor unfortunately takes place on every continent except Antarctica and even in the U.S. So it seems to me that the main thrust of the work that's been done by the commission and what speakers have added is education. The school committee has emailed us that they voted unanimously to support the resolution unamended, and the only positive action proposed by the resolution is the school committee is encouraged to promote inclusion of this history of Brookline slavery in appropriate places in its curriculum. As Mr. Corthorn has noted, and he is teaching there, it was not taught, I don't know, so much or at all when he was a student here, and it needs to be taught more. Finally, I'll end by saying if, and I don't think we will, but if we vote no on this resolution, we'll be, in a way, denying our past. I hope you vote no on the amendment, but please vote yes on the resolution. Thank you.
Ms. Ames.
Can everybody hear me?
No.
How about now? Better?
Better.
Mariela Ames, Precinct 15. I am here in support of Article 27, in particular, in support of the paragraph that reads that the school committee is encouraged to promote inclusion of this history of Brookline slavery in appropriate places in its curriculum. I believe that Town Meeting is an appropriate body as representatives of the community at large to weigh in on what should be encouraged in our children's overall learning. The education value of acknowledging Brookline's own history of slavery is, in my view, the strongest part of this article. We should acknowledge this as part of our history. It should be a shame to miss the opportunity to open our children's eyes and minds to the past realities of Black people in our own town. I may sound irrational, but I would argue that apologies to Black people today are still due. I came to the country almost 20 years ago, and it did not take me too long to realize that the promise of opportunity, justice, and equality has not yet been realized in the Black community. I ask you to support the resolution with the paragraph encouraging making Brookline's history of slavery part of the school curriculum. Let's not shy away from the truth. Thank you.
The question's been called. I think we've had a fair discussion of all sides of this issue. I have no more speakers who signed up in advance. You see Ms. LaPlante and Mr. Van Skoyak at the microphones, who will not have an opportunity to speak to this article if you move to terminate debate. Is there a second? All those in favor of calling the question, please raise your hands. Those opposed, motion fails. Ms. LaPlante.
Fair.
Nope. Motion fails. We needed a two-thirds vote, and we didn't get anywhere near that. In fact, the majority were in favor of continuing the debate. Ms. LaPlante.
Virginia LaPlante, Precinct 6. I have a question for Barbara Brown, if she would respond to the complaints about historical inaccuracies in the resolution. What's her response to that?
Thank you, Ms. LaPlante, for the question. I've always felt that I am not interested in being politically correct, but I've always been interested in being historically correct. In 1675, it was residence of this town, and the reason why we know is that many years ago, I think more than a century ago, the city, the town of Brooklyn, Boston, separated out the records of the Town Meeting of Muddy River from the records of the Town of Boston. And the Town Meeting of Muddy River did meet as its own Town Meeting. So that is why we have records of slavery at that point that is specific to residents in the town. About Judge Sewell, Judge Samuel Sewell, the hanging In, about Judge Sewell, Judge Samuel Sewell, the hanging judge of Salem, who owned land here in Brookline, did not reside here on that land. It was his grandson, Henry, and he did oppose slavery. He wrote the first anti-slavery tract that is well-known in U.S. history called The Selling of Joseph. His grandson, with whom he never had a conversation, which would have been lovely if they had, was one of the larger slave owners of Massachusetts and was a resident of Brookline, Henry Sewell. One of his slaves did run away, and another one of them did clean town hall. About slavery becoming unconstitutional in 1783, there has been a very interesting debate among historians in the last 10 years, where 10 years ago, historians were comfortable saying that, as the earlier speaker said, that slavery ended in 1783. The current opinion of historians is that slavery did not end at that point because it was not in the main motion, the main decision of the judge, but in a side statement that did not carry weight and did not rule for other people. And so the best guess is that slavery basically petered out by 1800, and that's the records that I see for Brookline. Some go so far as to say that slavery did not end in Massachusetts until 1865, but I don't go that far. In terms of anti-slavery activists, I salute them. I have been part of that committee, the Underground Railroad Committee, that put up the plaques in front of the two still existing houses in the town. I am proud to be a part of that hit society that had those, that history. I take students on a walk to those houses every year. I am also proud to be part of a town that I believe is going to recognize and vote in favor of recognizing slavery in this town. Thank you.
Mr. Van Skoyak.
John Van Skoyak, Precinct 13. And Barbara Brown just spoke to my question, but I have to persist just a little bit, because I think Harry Friedman pointed out something that is worth acknowledging. The language of the first paragraph of the resolution seems to be in conflict, if you will look at the cover of the reports at the town seal, it seems to be in conflict with our own town seal.
Well, it's correct that the first town meeting held in Brookline was in 1705.
And, and the town seal refers to Brookline Incorporated 1705, and refers to Muddy River a part of Boston. So a, as much as I intend to vote for this resolution, and as much as I respect the work of the Hidden Brookline Committee, I wonder if they would accept, or at least fashion, some kind of amended language to that first paragraph.
No, we're not going to be fashioning amended language on the floor of town meeting.
Then I have to point out, we will be stuck voting for a resolution with language that conflicts with our own town seal.
Well, I'm not sure that's correct. I think the testimony we heard was that Muddy River, as a part of Boston, held separate meetings and had separate records that go back to 1675. In any case, we're, it seems we're now ready for a vote. The, we will first deal with Mr. Blood's amendment, which is to delete the last, next to last resolved clause at the bottom of page three of the lavender supplement. Those in favor of Mr. Blood's motion, please raise your hands. Those opposed? Motion fails. On the motion without an amendment, that commences at the bottom of page two of the lavender supplement, over to the bottom of page three, those in favor, please raise your hands. Those opposed?